Okay, I'd like to call the June 3, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. And we do have a quorum. I believe Dr. Fredwell will be getting here a little bit later, but we do have a quorum right now. Also, I'd like to call right now for a moment of silence. Our vision: Every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission: We empower every student, every day. At this time, I'd call on Board Member Hayes to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. At this time, item 201 on our agenda is announcement or changes to the agenda as needed. Do we have a change, Dr. Winborn, that you are aware of?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? I need a motion now to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, and this will be our agenda for tonight. The next section is our superintendent communication and community, and we'll hear from Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board members, administrative team members, those in attendance and joining via video. It is very difficult to believe that we are in the final week of school for the 2023-2024 school year. This year's absolutely flown by. I want to thank, straight up, all of our educators and all of our staff who have worked so hard to get us to this point. We heard earlier tonight testimony from our graduates about the amazing things that the teachers, their teachers, have done for them throughout their career in our school district. And I just want to take a special point to thank everyone, all of our teachers and support staff in all of our schools, for everything they've done. I know that many of them right now are absolutely exhausted and running on fumes after having given just maximum effort throughout this school year and right up through the final days of this week. And I thank them, I really do. I'm so supportive, and I recognize all that they do, so thank you. I also want to thank all the students across the district for giving their very best effort. I know that testing is quite stressful and can be very challenging, but they've really stepped up and given it their all. And I know that they are also eager for a break from their studies and can maybe enjoy some fun this summer with family and friends. I do want to say that while the official results from state testing are still many weeks away from being released, our teachers and principals are already using some of the unofficial data and the internal results to help plan for next school year. It's hard to believe, yes, that's already beginning, looking ahead. And Board members, you, of course, will be getting a sneak peek at some of that data in the coming weeks, and I hope that will indicate an overall positive trajectory that our school district is moving in. We can certainly look back and consider some other very significant positive progress this year. The safety of our schools has been protected and safeguarded very well throughout this year. I'm very proud of that. Our overall student attendance is up significantly this school year, and student behavior has improved dramatically, both in the total number of referrals having decreased and the total number of suspensions decreased even more. Our vacancy rates for our teachers and our classified staffs have also vastly improved over this school year. And finally, we as a team and our board members have all taken a collective, serious step forward in tightening our belts financially for what we know is a very difficult budget season ahead. And as I've said before, all of the available resources that we have are getting pushed as close to our schools as possible. That is my goal. So, all things considered, I believe it's not too early to state that we've had a very successful school year. And this is due in large part to the strong leadership of our board, the hard work of our school leaders, and, most importantly, the hard work, as I said before, of our teachers and our support staff. And I want to tell all of you who are here tonight and those who are listening or who may watch this later that we support you, and I thank you for all of your continued work. I look forward to capping off this final week of school with some wonderful graduation ceremonies this weekend. I can't wait to shake the hands of those proud graduates and confer their diplomas. So, Board members, as usual, I look forward to a very productive meeting tonight, much of which has come through your committees. And at this time, I will defer to the Board Chair for your remarks. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Grahamville County Board of Education, we want to welcome you to our June 3 Board meeting. Whether you are in person or joining us by livestream, we appreciate your interest and support for Grahamville County Public Schools. It's hard to believe, as Dr. Winborn said, the school year is ending later this week. It seems like just a few weeks ago we started school. We want to thank our teachers, administrators, and staff for their dedication and hard work this school year. I think I can speak for all the Board members when I say that we have amazing teachers and amazing programs going on in our schools. Other than committee meetings, I had the opportunity to attend the Career Technical Education Work Keys Celebration in May. High school students enrolled in our CTE programs, and that's Career Technical Education, used to be called Vocational Ed for some of us. Those programs throughout the district that passed the testing requirements in the different areas that prepare them for the workforce were honored with certificates. These credentials they earn are an asset to them on the job and in applying for employment. Several businesses and people in our community donated prizes for these students. We are grateful for their donations and support. A big thank you to all of our CTE teachers and staff for working so hard with these kids and for putting on such a nice celebration. There have been a variety of year-end programs and celebrations going on in our schools, and we appreciate the parents and the community that come out and support these events. I had the opportunity this past month to attend the South Grahamville High School Choral Program. They gave an amazing performance. In fact, I'm not quite sure, I think we may see them on one of those television programs, The Voice or something, that they're just fabulous. And if you haven't had a chance to hear them, take an opportunity next year. Also, I attended the silent auction at Northern Grahamville Middle School Chairs for Charity event, and I am now the proud owner of a beautiful chair. Also attended volunteer appreciation tea at West Oxford Elementary School. Ms. Kathy Carroll is overseeing a reading buddy program at the school wherein volunteers work one-on-one with a child. This program is making a huge difference for these students. We are grateful for Ms. Carroll's leadership and the volunteers that have served this school year. We appreciate all of our volunteers throughout our school's district. Also served as an EOG test proctor in a 4th grade class at West Oxford this past week. Three hours is a really long time for students to be silent, but they did. They were real happy when it was over. There are still several award ceremonies planned for this week throughout our district. On Friday, May 17, Grahamville Early College held its graduation ceremony. The ceremony took place at the main campus of Vance Grahamville Community College and was well attended with standing room only. Graduations are a special highlight of the school year. South Grahamville School's graduation will take place this Friday night, and J.F. Webb High School, Grahamville Central High School, and Grahamville Academy will hold their graduation ceremonies on Saturday. We are proud of these young people as they leave our school system to enter either the military, the workforce, technical training programs, or college. We congratulate them on their achievements and wish them the very best. Just prior to tonight's meeting, as Dr. Winborn indicated, we heard reflections from our seniors at our high schools. They are awesome young people, and it makes, it is just such a wonderful reminder of why we sit here, month after month. We want all of our kids to achieve and to graduate from high school. Tonight's agenda will cover many of the items that came before our committees this past month. This concludes my remarks. And one more thing before we go to remarks from the other Board members. We have our schedule of Board meetings for the coming year, and we probably need to go ahead and adopt that. If I'm not mistaken, if we do have a change, we just would post that. Is that correct?
That's right. Well, if you change one of your regular meetings, we'll just revise the calendar and update it.
Okay, it would be updated, but this is what our plan is right now. Do I have a motion for...
Question.
Do you have a question?
Oh, they remain on Mondays. Okay. Just wanted to clarify what I was voting for.
Yes, sir. Madam Chair, if I may, we, this proposed list is the first Monday of every month and does not push it out because of vacation. We felt, as a team, that we would be able to accommodate that. This past year, we had delayed some because it fell on the Monday after a vacation, and this time, we kept that first Monday.
And I assume what we'll do is, if we need a work session, we will schedule one as needed, rather than scheduling them right now. Do we have a motion to accept this?
Motion to adopt proposed Board of Education meetings for the following year.
We have a second? Mr. Pease, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Calendar is adopted. Now, at this time, we'll have reports from all of our Board members. Mr. Pease, start with you and go around the table.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Other than the 100 committee meetings I had, I did attend the North Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors Meeting, first of last month now. And there were two things I thought, sort of, took away from that. We spent the majority of the, dealing with business of the association. But we had a presentation from the lottery, which was interesting, and they told us how much money each county had received since the beginning of the lottery. And I think that was 45 million plus. I don't have the exact figures, but it sounds like a pretty good number. And I don't know where it all goes, but I'll check with Stein on that. And the other thing that was discussed at length was the opportunity scholarships. That's, it's called some other things, but, and the reason we were having the discussion was because the state didn't spend all of the money they had in this year's budget for opportunity scholarships. And they are planning to expand it in the next year, which is one of those things they do over there that's crazy, but that's the way they operate. But those are two things that was really interesting coming from our lobbyists at the General Assembly. And I managed to attend a couple of things here in the county. Arts in Blooms, I guess, at the Tar River. And I also attended the basketball banquet at South Grahamville. That's my report, Madam Chair.
Dr. Lancy?
Yes. For the month of May, I had a chance to attend the Northern Grahamville Web combined concert. Although they were smaller, remember, they were mighty in sound. They did outstanding job there at the Northern Grahamville Auditorium. Mr. Pease, along with Dr. Cozart, we gave the Phoenix Academy staff a luncheon on, for teacher appreciation month on May the 10th, and they really enjoyed that recognition. I also caused the early college graduation at Vance Grahamville 17th. I went to South Grahamville's baccalaureate program on the 15th of May. And I also attended Superintendent's, Dr. Winborn's, public forum addressing these goals for the year, had impact from the input from the community, and I'm sure you got some good responses from that joint meeting. So that concludes my report for the month.
Well, a lot of these that you all have already noted, like your strategic plan presentation there at the center, attended that, toured that. I did attend a lot of other ceremonies, such as the volunteer presentation appreciation one at West Oxford, also the silent auction one as well. And I also was able to get a chair as well, but it's already been given to my granddaughter, so beautiful, beautiful chair.
I have Nemo.
And, of course, she has the Disney one, my granddaughter. But we also attended, I attended the early college graduation. That was great. And, of course, like Mr. Pease says, a lot of the meetings, committee meetings, such as the Policy Academic and Finance Committee meetings as well that I attended, and some recognition and award ceremonies as well. That was great. And, yes, that J.F. Webb and Northern Grahamville Band Performance, very nice, very nice. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, over the past month, I have been able to attend quite a few things, starting with the Grahamville Central FFA plant sale, where I got some really great cilantro that I've already used. The South Grahamville FFA banquet and their baccalaureate night. I do want to thank the Creemore officials that came to the baccalaureate night, and also, I think County Commissioner May attended as well. And they always do a great job of supporting South Grahamville and all of our students there, and I'm really appreciative of that. We had a great time at the district work key celebration. It was a little bit like Christmas. We were getting a handout, all these gift cards and prizes to all of our wonderful CTE students. So that was really fun. And, of course, early college graduation. The Spring Choral Concert was amazing, as usual, and I want to thank Jenny Hawke for all of her hard work this year. The district strategic planning meeting was a great night. I want to thank all of the community members that came out and contributed to that information. And I want to remind everybody that I think there's an online version that they can access from our Grahamville County Schools website, right? So if you haven't looked at our strategic planning, our strategic plan, I would really encourage you to go onto the Grahamville County website and look at it, and we would appreciate any of your feedback. You know, we're taking all suggestions. And I also went to the South Grahamville All School Award Ceremony and was able to make it to their softball and baseball athletic ceremony. I want to thank Commissioner May, who presented a proclamation to both of those teams from the county commissioners to highlight all of their achievements over the last two years. And Ms. Stein, who did an awesome job with her art students at Mount Energy, as she always does. And we had some extremely productive committee meetings over the past month. Legislative updates. Our committee is going to take the summer off, but the county commissioners are actually supposed to be approving the resolutions from us tonight. They did not get to them at their previous session, but they are on the agenda tonight, and I'm hopeful that they will unanimously support all of those. We've done some great work finding some unfunded mandates and some disparities in funding that we are trying to address at the state level. There are some disparities, like the state retirement plan and some unfunded mandates, like technology, that cause some shortfalls in our budget. And I would encourage community members and other Board members to take a look at those resolutions on Board docs and please share them. If you are meeting with another elected official, we could use all the support that we could get. And our committee may be taking the summer off, but I would encourage other Board members to do the same thing. Reach out to our legislators, go to Raleigh. We can't turn the ship around without fixing the funding, so that's really important. And, yeah.
You forgot one thing. You were brave enough to go on a field trip.
Oh, my God. Well, Ms. Kern was there, too, so we had an overnight field trip with, it was over 100, wasn't it? It was a lot.
About 200 of us total.
Yeah, but over 100 middle schoolers to Charlotte. So that was a lot of fun and a little bit stressful, being responsible for all of those kids, but, yeah, it was a good experience.
They were really good, though.
They were. They were. And they had a really great time. We went to Carowinds the final day that we were there, and it was a blast. It really was.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is our policy revisions. This is a first read from our previous meeting on 5/7/24. And they are listed on the, under this item. Does anybody have any questions? Did you want to comment on them, Attorney Dugason?
Board members, the majority of these are updates from the North Carolina School Board Association Policy Service, which we did customize through discussion and policy committee. Policy 4327, the first one, is a local policy, and these changes were made to bring it more in line with best practice and current practice in the school system. And then I will just note that as part of these policy updates, we have recommended repeal of two policies. 6440 local purchasing requirements and 6523 use of computers, because that information has been incorporated into other policies, so we're trying to reduce redundant or unnecessary
Do we have a motion on, do we want to, these are our first reads, we can wave and go ahead with that, or we can wait and do it on a second read?
Madam Chair, nobody have any questions or concern? I'll make a most approved, most read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policies have been approved. And we have another policy meeting tomorrow, so there'll be some more coming. The next item on our agenda is Public Comment 305. Ms. Corrin?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did not have anyone send any digital comments, and we do have one person signed up for public comment, so I will read information about our public comment. Each speaker will receive no more than five minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 30 minutes total, except by majority vote of the Board. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the Board with the additional information in written form. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the Board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through applicable GCPS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. Profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted. So our speaker tonight is Scotty Brooks, who is speaking about G.C. Holly Middle School.
Okay, I said, "Good evening." Good evening. Okay, thank you. I know we were all raised right. So, it came to my attention that our county commissioners were attempting to strong-arm this Board. And I use the language "strong-arm" because that's what it seems like, when someone asks you to sell them 27 acres of prime real estate for $1. That would be like me coming to you, asking you, would you sign the deed over to your house, to me, for $250? You wouldn't do it. You wouldn't sign your car over to me for $50. So why would anyone ask you in their right mind to sign over 27 acres of land for $1, even with the promise of, "We will give you some money later on," from a Board that's telling you, when you go to their meetings, which I did the last one I attended, they said, "We don't have any money." So when a broke man or broke woman asks you to give over a prime asset for a promise of some money, you might want to take heed and not give them what they're asking for. Now, we have sat here in my lifetime, I'm 53 years old, and in my lifetime, I have seen the Grahamville County School Board completely erase historically black institutions of education. We're standing in one right now. Mary Potter, my mother graduated from here. Joe Toler, grandmother graduated from there. And now, G.C. Holly. My father graduated from there. So, CG Cradle, still open. CG Cradle was in terrible condition when I went there in the early 80s, and I'm sure it's not that great right now, but it's still open, and it has a significant history in Grahamville County, but so do the three previous institutions I just stated. So, what we've also seen in Grahamville County is the rise of a school, we have a charter school that has demographics that look like right after integration. It's crazy. We're watching history repeat itself. So we're now building segregated schools that are publicly funded by our tax dollars. I think that's horrible. But if you're going to build another school on that land, it should be a public school, because we know what people do with charter schools when they have the amount of money that they get and the ability to control by social economics who goes to that school. If you don't have lunch programs, you don't have buses, you know that's going to eliminate probably 90% of the people in this county that can actually get their kids to that school. So, Grahamville County School Board, what are we asking the public? What are we asking you to do? Do not fold and do not bend your knee to our county commissioners. Tell them, "No." If they want that land, want to use that land, let them build what they want to on it, and they can lease it from you, and you can get some money from it. Just treat it like a real estate transaction. Rent it to them. Don't give it to them for $1. I pray that your hearts will be what you use to vote, and you will vote the right way.
The Board at this time will hear a citizen presentation regarding the Holly property Is Ms. Edwards here?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Linda Edwards is here.
There she is.
And Ms. Kern, I believe, has some instructions to share with the Board regarding that.
So, Board Policy says that in order that the Board may fairly and adequately discharge its overall responsibility, citizens desiring an item to be placed on the agenda for a specific Board meeting should direct written requests to the Board Chair and/or Superintendent at least five working days prior to the meeting. The approximate amount of time will be up to 10 minutes that would be needed to make the presentations. Questions and on materials to be presented to the Board are to be submitted along with the request. If the request is approved, the Superintendent shall notify the requesting party of the response to the request. At the meeting, the Board may, by majority vote, and notwithstanding prior denial by the Superintendent, add an item to the agenda before the agenda is adopted. After the agenda has been adopted, a two-thirds vote is required to add a new item to the agenda. So Ms. Edwards will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me or who are new, my name is Linda Edwards.
I've been coming up here for about, what, six, seven years now, and I'm Reverend Hawley's granddaughter, and I represent Reverend Hawley's family. I represent the G.C. Hawley Alumni Association Incorporated, and I represent some of the citizens that have reached out to me and looking to help support in any way they can. I was at your work meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I heard County Manager Drew Cummings with a proposal, which is not the first time the county commissioners have come to this board seeking to have that property that is G.C. Hawley, I was about to say high school, G.C. Hawley Middle School. This is an ongoing thing, and some of you all may not know, I think there might be one or two people in here who remember Mr. Hubert Gooch, and at that time, he came to my grandmother's house to let us know that the current school board at that time wanted to take my grandfather's name off the building. So this has been an ongoing fight, and this is nothing new, but I want to come in and give you two other options that I did not hear spoken or discussed at your last work meeting. One of the options is, first, let me say this, we already know the handwriting on the wall, and we have been working with the school board when Dr. McLean was here, so we already know Hawley was going to close because of underfunding for many years, not specifically about this board, but, and not specifically about the current county commissioners. So I am very aware and very learned in where you get your money from, so that's not a problem. We already knew that Hawley would need to close, and we know why. We already knew that you all would have to tear down the older buildings, I think they're from 1940s, 1950s, because of various health issues and safety issues. What I don't understand, and neither can the alumni, is why you would agree to give up the entire 27.5 acres of land that was donated to my grandfather and the school district at that time by a black farmer, when nobody else in Creedmoor, Oxford, anywhere else, would help those black students in Creedmoor. That school started in 1920, the early 20s. It was a tobacco barn. If you've ever ridden along, you can see sometimes in the wintertime, you can catch a glimpse of an old tobacco barn up in the woods. It had two teachers and a compilation of maybe 80 to 100 students. Wooden building, no heat, no AC, no running water, no bathroom, no kitchen. The women at the churches at that time would feed the children, and that's when they hired my grandfather, a few years later, in the early 30s. He had just graduated and got his degree and came back home to be principal there, and at the time, it was called Creedmoor Elementary, I'm sorry, no, it wasn't, it was called Creedmoor Negro Elementary School. He came in and immediately asked DPI, what we call DPI now, asked the people in Raleigh to give him permission to create a high school, which he did, and in 1939, the first graduates graduated, the first black children in that area were able to get a high school diploma. Because before then, if you did not have the money to pay to come here to Mary Potter, because it was called Mary Potter Academy at the time, your kids did not get educated unless, not in a school setting. So what you see now is what my grandfather did with the help of the black citizens in that area, and when the military shut down the base in Butner, some of you know that that, I hope you know, that is an old military base, they still own some of that land over there, and they deconstructed the buildings. My grandfather took citizens and some staff on a bus that he bought out of his first paycheck. They had wagons and horses, and anyone who did have a gas-running vehicle, they went all the way to Butner with tools and deconstructed buildings, wood, nails, and bricks, and brought them back to the property, because the current Hawley site is not the original Hawley site. That sits across the street. And they built what you see now. Along, a few years later, the county decided they needed to do something because population exploded. He had bus drivers, back then, students used to drive buses, they did that even when I was in high school. He had bus drivers that would come literally into Oxford and pick up kids and take them back to Creedmoor so they could go to school, because their parents could not afford to send them here, because Mary Potter was a boarding school, and you had to pay. And back then, a dollar every two weeks is like $1,000 to us today. So we have two options that we would like for you to, actually, I'm requesting that you have a discussion about this, because you did not discuss it, and I think it's only fair since I know the details that the county commissioners want, and I will read those in the email that I sent to Board Williams, and I assume she gave it a copy to you all. One of the options that we have is that the Grandpa County School Board and the Grandpa County County Commissioners work together. Nobody deeds anything to anybody, but you work together in designing the recreational facility that the commissioners want to build, allowing them to have the portion of land that their architect and their contractor, which so far, no one has shown me who that is, because I don't think they have it on paper, but I'm not going to 100% say that because they could have it and just not be showing it for their own reasons. But to my knowledge, there is no architectural plan, there's no contract on site, nobody's, they just say this is what they want to do. So our main first proposal is you all work together, you carve out how much land they're going to need for this recreational facility, that you do not deed anything over. It should be sited or seeded on the property so that it leaves the majority of the land, because another middle school is going to have to be built. No one in here is stupid. We already know that. Creedmoor Elementary is a Band-Aid, and that's what was going on when y'all did this. I was in those meetings, so I have receipts. So the other part to this would hold the commissioners accountable for their promises, that they will give you these $2-3 million that all of a sudden they found, that they will also name their facility the Reverend, they don't have to put Reverend, but it should say the G.C. Hawley Recreational, whatever they want to call it, and it needs to be prominently displayed, not on the glass door. I want it up on the building. Wherever they have that main sign, his name better be the first thing up there, and we've already discussed this, and I've already talked to Mr. Cummings with Superintendent Wimbourn, with the board chair for the alumni, and so we're going to hold y'all to what y'all promised. We also want to make sure that they're going to keep their promise in demolishing the building, first getting the asbestos, paying for the asbestos removal, demolishing the building, hauling it away, grading the land, all of that that they promised. We also want to make sure in that option that they do what they promise, and the Grandpa County public school students will not have to pay to use those facilities, and that there will be a historical timeline prominently in the hallway or in a room, I mean, in a public area, not a conference room. That's, you don't want, we've been shut up too long with our history. I'm not going to stand for that. Now, it needs to be prominent. I have no problems with a recreational center being put there, but they do not need the whole 27 acres. The other agenda, the other proposal we have is the same promises, hold them to it, but you deed over what they need. They don't need, and you hold the rest of the property, because you are going to have to build another middle school, and you should want to be wanting to build another G.C. Hawley Middle School, not just another middle school. And this is what the alumni, the family of G.C. Hawley, and some of the citizens that have reached out to me, and we also have 1,674 signatures on a petition that we circulated. So I would hope that the requests we are making will be taken seriously. You will not do this vote tonight. Also, I am under the understanding that the lawyers haven't even finished out the paperwork yet, because I think the commissioners are waiting to find out what y'all are doing. This little rope-a-dope gang, y'all going to play for this. Don't let fear get you, because I'm in here looking for the righteous hearts, the ones that helped my grandfather, that God sent to help him do what he did. It's not a person in Creedmoor that's black that did not come through Hawley. I taught some of their children and their grandchildren. So if you all are really going to be about, "I go to church, I love God," then let me see your heart, because I was raised by my grandfather. So I, I'm not in here for the rope-a-dope. You're going to do your job, do it well, and if you're going to come in here and say you're this and that for all the students and for the history, let's be for it, because that property is worth $7.1 million tax value. That's just a tax value. That doesn't make any sense to give up all that property, and I'm sure there's a way budget can be founded to keep that property that's cleared, fence it off, keep it insured, that can be worked out, too. We'll do a fundraiser for y'all.
That's Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, for sharing. Okay, we now come to 307, the proposed redevelopment of G.C. Hawley property by the county for recreational and community use. As mentioned, you have all had a chance to look, I hope, at the document that the attorneys did put together. At this time, I would ask that if anyone feels that we need to go into closed session, they can make a motion. No decision would be made in closed session, only questions, legal questions answered. Do we have anyone that wants to go into closed session?
I do make that motion that we go into closed session, as you said, other questions to be posed.
Okay. Have a second.
Yeah, I'll second the motion, but I feel like there's some things that the community needs to know about, and I would hope that we can have that discussion in closed session, not this discussion, but there are things that I want to talk to the community about that has to do with the selling of the property or the deeding of the property. So with that said, I would make a motion to go into closed session for that purpose, but I would hope that nobody would leave until they hear what I have to say about this.
I wouldn't think the closed session is going to take extremely long time, and we will come right back out and then can have that discussion.
Madam Chair, if I may, I do want to note that the documents the board is being asked to consider are posted on the public agenda tonight.
Right. They're in the board docs. All in favor of the motion?
Could you explain it to the audience?
Yes, the documents that the county and the board are considering, a contract and a resolution, are posted on the public, on the board docs, and any discussion about whether to approve them or whether that is a good idea will happen in open session. The only purpose for closed session is any questions you have here.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, we'll go forward, I assume probably a brief closed session, and then the public can return to the room. As previously indicated, the contract, well, agreement, so to speak, is on the board docs, but we're going to ask Attorney Dubison if she'll kind of go over the main points of it, the main things, but it is available on board docs to read in its entirety. Attorney Dubison, if you'll share with us.
Absolutely. So there's two documents posted for the board's approval. One is a resolution which would declare the property surplus and approve the transfer under certain conditions, and then the conditions are contained in a contract. And so I'm going to review the contract, just, I'm going to review sort of the whereas's and the initial, I would say, six terms, and then summarize the rest, which is a little bit more legalese. So what this is, is it's entitled "An Agreement for Conveyance of Real Property and Interlocal Agreement Regarding Use of Real Property," and this would be an agreement that both the commissioners and the Board of Education would have to approve. And it sets forth that the county has expressed its desire to obtain the property described below, which is the two tracts that constitute the Hawley property, to develop and use the same for construction of an athletic park and related facilities, which would benefit the board's educational programs for youth and students attending Grandpa County schools, which would be referred to as the intended use, and whereas the board is unable to use the property for a school in its current condition due to deterioration and the need for repairs and renovation that exceed available funds, and whereas the board is informed that demolition of the current structures on the property could cost between $1 million and $1.5 million, including the cost of asbestos abatement, and whereas the county has agreed to significantly increase its appropriations to the board to meet other school system capital needs, including an appropriation of $2.75 million to the board in capital outlay funds for fiscal year '24-'25, and the county manager has agreed to include in his recommended budget for '25-'26 and '26-'27, a recommended appropriation of at least $3.25 million in capital outlay funds per year, and whereas the board currently spends in excess of $150,000 per year to maintain the property. And whereas, based on the intended use, which is a proper school purpose of supplementing the board's educational programs, and the fact that the board is currently unable to use the property, the board, if approved tonight, will adopt a resolution authorizing conveyance of the property to the county for the intended use and other benefits that are identified in this agreement, including the county's agreement to assume full liability for the demolition of any structure on the property, and this is in accordance with Article 9, Section 7 of the North Carolina Constitution, as well as North Carolina general statutes, and whereas the board will derive material benefit from preferential reasonable use of any recreational facilities constructed upon the property, which would offset the funds the board would otherwise spend for recreational and athletic facilities. And so the terms of the contract would be as follows. The board agrees to convey the property onto the county. The property is to be conveyed for the benefits identified in the intended use, meaning use as an athletic park for school purposes, as long as it is used primarily for that intended use. The board shall be allowed preferential use of any recreational facilities constructed upon the property for its students upon request and without charge, subject to reasonable requirements regarding advanced scheduling and facility use. The county, in return, agrees to appropriate $2.75 million to the board in capital outlay funds for fiscal year '24-'25, which represents an increase of approximately 75% over the capital outlay appropriation for the current fiscal year, and the county manager shall include in his recommended budget for '25-'26 and '26-'27, a recommended appropriation of at least $3.25 million in the capital outlay funds per year, that the county shall begin demolition within two years, and shall begin construction of athletic properties, athletic facilities on the property within five years. The property shall henceforth be known as the G.C. Hawley Athletic Park, or some similar name incorporating the name G.C. Hawley, and shall honor his legacy through historical artifacts and information displayed on the property. And should the county fail to meet these obligations in paragraphs 2 through 5 above, the board shall have the option to reacquire the property at no cost to the board pursuant to the option described below in this agreement, after the parties have worked together in good faith to examine and resolve the county's implementation efforts. And so, without getting too far into the details, the option essentially means that if the county did not meet those, those conditions over the next number of years and build an athletic park and continue to give the board priority usage, that the board could exercise an option to retake the property after a period of consultation and attempts to work together, without necessarily any legal proceedings, just notify the county that we're exercising our option, and that triggers the county to have to return the So those are the main conditions. So those are the main conditions of the agreement. As I said, it would need to be approved by both boards. And then the resolution that is attached is a resolution declaring the property surplus and authorizing the superintendent and chair to execute any legal documents that are required to effect the transfer. I will note that the county has also agreed to pay any costs of closing, of surveys, the typical costs that come with transferring a real property.
Are there any questions about that information that was just shared?
Yes, I have.
You want to just go around, just go around the table?
Several comments, concerns, questions.
Ms. Peace?
Thank you. The, let me start with, I have talked to several groups, including the Alumni Association and the citizens of Granville County. And I gave the chair 1,752 signed petitions by the alumni and the county citizens. And they are in favor of saving Holly School. Now, that doesn't mean that we need to save the one that's standing there now. It means that if the county is going to give us the school system, based on what the attorney just said, in excess of $5 million over the next few years, in order for us to turn this property over to them, to me, they would be just doing what they're supposed to be obligated to do, if they are supposed to do the funding of buildings and those type of things for the county schools. Now, Ms. Edwards talked about the options that we, she put forth for the county to consider, for the board to consider, because the county didn't have anything to do with it until we give it the property to them right now, it's still ours. And I just want people to know that the school system is in a bind. The, during COVID, we received a lot of funds from the federal government. It runs out September, last September. We did a lot of good with that, with those funds, provided additional staff, bonuses for teachers and people to get paid more. But that's gonna end. And from where I sit, we are in a critical situation, because we need funds. The county that say don't have any money is gonna front us $5 million over the next three, two, three years. So, you know, to me, it looks like, it sounds like, and I want the commissioners to know that from my perspective, and I don't want to speak for me, no other board members, is that I don't appreciate being blackmailed by them or anybody else. And sooner or later, these people, these 1,752 people and more that signed this petition, is gonna be looking at them when it comes time for them to run for office again, I hope. And I'll be off the board then, so I will be out there with them. I, I'll stop right there, because the idea that, well, I'll just stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. Ms. LeBrett? Dr. Lindsay?
Well, let me first say that being on Granville County School Board, I think it's one of the most important boards we can serve on here in this community here, because of the decision we have to make. And tonight, we have to make a real major decision based on what's best for our kids in Granville County. And I was very moved by Sister Edwards' history line about Holly School, being from this part of Granville County, I knew it was there. I knew it was probably some tough times that the citizens of Southern Granville County had to endure to get a school there in that part of Granville County for children of color. And I know that many of those citizens benefited, they have been the factors from the hard work of Reverend Jesus Hollis and members of that community there. It's very, very moving here. However, as Mr. Peace alluded to, we are in a tough bind who come to fund for our kids in Granville County. Charter schools came out of nowhere, and they are poor money, of course, the state funds them as well here. And we all know that ADM, average daily membership is what pays us. Then the first three days of school here, we had to send the members in to Raleigh to see how many kids are in our schools here. And we're based on those numbers right there. So when those numbers come in, that's what we have to pay, that's got money for teachers, support staff here. So when the money's low, the staff is low. And we giving kids now in our system here, come to school really not prepared for learning, out of our control here. However, it's our job in our schoolrooms, give them the best education possible, the best education possible. And I really feel that all the hard work that Mr. Reverend Jesus Hollis paid for get the school, Holly School here, there should be some type of building on that ground that speaks to education. He was not an athlete. He was not a star athlete. He was an educator who wanted to make things better for the kids in Granville County. So why not try to have, if the commissioners are real sick with what they're doing here, try to have a building that speaks to his profession as an educator, a pioneer here in Granville County? That would be more fitting to me than a complex. I'm all about health, but the mindset, long-term learning, vision is what they need to rest upon. Tough times, we must make tough decisions. We have a tough one here to make. But I hope that at the end of this meeting here, that we all will see that right now we're in a bind here, we need the funds to educate our kids here. So what we still can keep Reverend Hollis' vision alive by trying to support kids in Granville County, they swim out of school for two whole months here. If you're an organization where you can help a kid out with a read a book, math, enrichment, you do that. Because that mean we are embracing the vision of Reverend G.C. Hollis, not only today, but a lifetime, lifetime learners here. So I end with that, but say that tonight, we must make a tough decision. But we must keep the dream alive that Reverend G.C. Hollis planted here in Granville County years and years ago with the tractors, $1, $2, and $3 here, that he spent part of his own pocket here, so people in Southern Granville County will be educated today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Dr. Frederick, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I think the only thing that I would say is, I mean, at the end of the day, to me, this comes down to a financial decision. And I think that, I mean, nobody wants to pay any dishonor to anything that G.C. Hollis did and went through for our community. And I only know a fraction of it, and it's moving. And I just want to, I guess, communicate that I love what's been said about honoring his memory, and the timeline was very illuminating, because that was a lot of history that I didn't know as well, so that was educational for me. But to me, I didn't like the charter schools, I don't need to beat that, of course, we've talked about that tonight, and I agree with what Dr. Lindsay and, you know, Mr. Peace said about the money part of everything. So I mean, to me, this is a financial thing, and I don't think I have much more to say besides that.
Thank you, Dr. Frederick. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, it's, like you said, how it's already been said, that this is definitely going to be a hard decision to make, you know? With what's, we've been talking about with C.G. Holly and also working with the board, you know, I was a little taken aback that everything was being pushed so fast, you know, because we need to have those discussions, we need to, and, you know, we have met and everything and talked this, but it was like under, like, we need to know this now. You know, when the county commissioner came out and he said, you know, "We're getting the budget ready, and you all need to make a decision." Like, you know, and I think that was when I said, "Well, don't you all think the community would like to know a little bit about this before we make a decision on this?" Which is why we did back down on that, and which is why now we do have input in, you know, from the community that we heard here this evening. And, you know, don't forget, it is the community that make up where we are. It is us, the community, we're paying taxes. I've heard folks say here, "Oh, it's a financial thing, it's a financial thing." It's always been a financial thing. Give me a break, you know? But let's try to do the right thing. If we, you know, if we, and I, that's what I was saying. I heard someone else give another example of what, you know, they felt this was being pushed on us. And yeah, it's like having your back against the wall. You need to make a decision right now. Come on, we've been having financial issues forever. We can work through this. We need to get with the commissioners and say, "Come on, let's work together. Let's do this." You know, we don't want to take everything, what you want to do with the athletic park, but, and, you know, we will have, you know, primary, you know, support of it as far as the schoolchildren and everything. But we can also work together to do other things. We are not working hand in hand. You know, no, we are not. As the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Education is, "Do this, this is what you gotta do, and you gotta make a decision right now." And I say, take a step backwards and try to work this thing together. Because this can definitely be something that can be positive for both of us, for the entire county. And yes, I know we have a shortage of funds. I know they're gonna give us this, this, this. But see, you don't say, "Let's do this, you know, we'll do this, if you all would do this, we'll give you this much this year, give you this much next year." You know, putting those things out there is to pull you in. Don't do that. Let's work this thing together. We are all, and we all have kids in the system. Now, I don't have any children in the system, no, or, you know, was an educator, or actually I came here to live, I was, did not grow up here. But children, keep the focus on children. Right now, we got to focus on everything else but children. Let's do this the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Hayes?
It is always a financial decision, always. And I think, in my opinion, that the problem is that historically Granville County schools over the last few decades has not been efficient in their financial decisions. And that has put a lot of us that are new to this board in a very, in a not great position. There are a lot of us here that have been here for less than three and a half years, six of us. And, you know, it's not fair that we should be forced to clean up messes. But here we are. And Dr. Lindsay, you're absolutely right. We do have to put the kids first, and it's about what they need from us right now. I made that pretty clear at our last meeting. And I understand the push from the county commissioners was to get this done in their budget time, in their timeline for their budget, and I understand that's what the push was. And that did make us rush through this. And that, that has taken a lot of our ability to disseminate information to the public away. But we have to be effective in educating these children. We need more resources. We need to provide more for all of them than what we have been providing for the last few decades. How many times have we heard about low proficiency rates, or lack of funding for athletics, or the arts, or our need for TAs, and all of these other things that we are in desperate need of? And for me, it all boils down to we've lost about 35% of our ADM over the past decade. We have empty hallways all over Granville County. And what that means for us is that we are expending a lot more money across our county to keep doors open to schools that are only partially full. And we cannot fund the things that we need to fund to provide those educational resources if we continue to be as inefficient as we have. I feel like that's what this decision boils down to, is whether or not we're gonna show people that we can be more efficient with the money that we're given, so that they can trust us to do better with more money.
Madam Chair, I just need to jump in one time. Mr. Peace, you, how long were you on the board, was that 40 years? How long were you on the board?
These days, I'm gonna be third fat.
So when it came to the board that Holly needed to be repaired, how y'all handled that? When you sent the idea to the board, to the county commissioners, how they handled that?
Let me, let me respond to that in this way. During my time on this board, every year, there is a budget prepared that I was a part of. It got submitted to the county, and it never was funded at the degree or the rate that we asked for as a board. Now, there were times when people on the board said, "They're not gonna give us this much, so let's not ask for it." And I'm like, "No, we need to ask for what we need, whether we get it or not." Now, Ms. Hayes alluded to the board having made a mess of things in the past, and I would take issue with that, because we get all our funding to do what we need to do from somebody else. We don't want to give it to her, we have to, that's why we have buildings that need repaired, that's why we have thousands of dollars worth of roofs that need to be repaired right now, because our capital outlay funds, all of a sudden, we can get a million, a couple million dollars, when we haven't been getting that in order to do it. And I'm not going to take the blame for stuff that happens on this board that when I lobby it for things to get, and when I, if I come to ask you for $10 and you give me $5, I only got half what I need. Now, whose fault is it? I mean, you know, that's where I am with this. And I think if they can do what we need, we built three schools since I've been on the board. Renovated cradle in its entirety. Holly always came up short in that deal. And, and I don't, I can't live in the past. It's what we got right now and moving forward. You know, anybody can blame me for where we are now, all, I mean, I don't, I don't mind. I mean, I got tough skin, you cut me, I don't bleed a whole lot. So, you know, I'm okay. But the fact that we are in a place where we are being held accountable, something that they have the purse, and we, I mean, we are, we need money, because we got people that's hired, we got money that's running out, and they know that. That's why it's a good time for them to say to us, you know, "This is the only option you've got. You do what we want you to do, or not, or we're not gonna give you any money." If you just think about that, that's crazy. But the fact is, that's where we are. So am I going to say to these people that as bad as we need this money, and the only choice is I choice that I got is do what you say I need to do? You know, I'm between a rock and a hard place. But I'm feeling like, you know, I'm gonna see to it that they suffer some too, somewhere along the line.
There has been much ado in the public about the amount of a dollar. But please keep in mind, when we look at our property tax sheets, that if we add our tax values on the land itself, it's, right now, I believe, a little less than a million. And the buildings are what's added to the value. But if the buildings are torn down, then the value of land is certainly not several million dollars at this point, twenty-seven acres. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. But that includes the buildings, the seventy-some, seven thousand, seven million dollars includes, on the tax sheet, includes the buildings. And it's assuming that they're usable, which they're not, for the most part. So just wanted to clear that up.
One other thing, Madam Chair. The county should be willing to give us what we need without holding our backs against the wall to do something that they know we need. And, you know, Superintendent and his staff have to start the school year off, and they need people to do it. And they need funding to do it. And I know that, the rest of this board know that, the county commissioners know that. And so, you know, this is where we are.
I would hope that the county commissioners would be willing to listen to some additional ideas for the use of that property beyond the initial plan to build athletic facilities. This county's in desperate need of more childcare, more pre-K. Would be an ideal situation for them to provide places for some hit start programs and things like that, too. So there's a lot of things that we may can hopefully suggest to them that they can take seriously to move ahead, to, to maybe meet some of those unmet needs that we have right now, so.
Madam Chair, the, this administration, on according to this agenda, say they recommend action. And what they recommending is that we do what the county commissioners want us to do. And I want the board to know, and everybody in the audience to know, that I'm gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote for it. As bad as I know we need it, I'm not being blackmail. I'm not.
Does anyone else want to make any comments before we put this to a vote?
Did you have anything else that you wanted to add, Ms. Williams? I was just curious, 'cause...
I think we pretty well covered it. Winborn, any thoughts? I won't bet you on the spot, but...
Yeah, so Madam Chair, this recommendation, this recommended action is mine. I absolutely understand and respect Mr. Peace's stance on this. I've had the pleasure of spending a lot of time recently with Ms. Edwards, and I've learned a great deal about the Holly legacy. I believe that while this is far from ideal, this is a win-win for our school district, for the county, for the community. I think the legacy of Reverend Holly will certainly continue as it is at a middle school right now. I would hope that that always be the case, that we have a G.C. Holly Middle School in this school district forever. And I think having an additional recreational facility that our students could benefit from, the community could benefit from, perhaps there may be other things, such as you recommended senior center, childcare, you know, cradle to grave kind of concept. And in addition, you know, I do appreciate, Ms. Williams, you bringing up the fact about trying to dispel the misinformation about a dollar. There is the net gain of over ten million dollars to our school district in the next three years as a result of this, which is significant, and will help our current students, all of our students, right now. They desperately need it. We're facing tremendously difficult budgetary constraints in the coming year. And are there things about this that could be better? Absolutely. But I believe that it's a best path forward. But again, this is your decision, board members.
I keep hearing ten million dollars. And when I read through the agreement, I only came with five. It was two for I don't remember the exact figure, but initially, you talked about two million for the first year, which was twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that right? Well, explain that to me again. How you, how you come up with ten million dollars?
Well, I didn't come up with ten million dollars. I haven't, I'm not sure where that number comes from. But what the contract says is that they would appropriate two-point-seven-five in capital outlay this year, and then that would increase to three-point-two-five the next two years. Now, those following years are as per the county manager's budget. Now, the, these are the numbers that the manager has put in his proposed capital improvement plan, which has not been approved by the commissioners yet. The other value that's received has to do with taking on the cost of the property, taking over the cost of removing the current structures, and taking on the ongoing maintenance. And then, of course, the value of the athletic fields.
Okay.
So I, I don't know that I could add that up to a specific number.
Did you say two-point-seven and then three-point-five?
Three-point-two-five and three-point-two-five, yes.
Well, it's been, the ten million been mentioned a time or two, and I just didn't, having figured it out, how you come up with that number. I, I'm not asking for an exact number, but the difference between the three that I see and the ten, and ten is a lot.
Well, and I think, that, that's a number that the county manager and I had talked about, because when you add all of the net benefits to the school district, the increase in capital outlay funding, the increase in the operations budget, the loss of liability for the demolition, and that's not even including any of the carrying costs or other potential, you know, repairs that might have to be made. But it, you know, looking out three years, I certainly think that that is the range that you could be looking at. Next year, Mr. Peace, to your point, is, is much less, right? It's the capital outlay difference, plus the operating increase, plus the carrying costs.
The other thing that, that concerned me was, is that, is that number based on where we are, starting from scratch? You know, we get some capital fund.
That's right.
Money now. So this is above what, so if we were getting ten dollars now, we gonna get another, so much money.
So this year, your capital outlay was about one-point-five million. So you can do the math, if it was two-point-seven-five next year, right?
Just, just one second.
And what's our projected needs for capital improvement and maintenance over the next ten years? Probably.
They're extremely large. This is, this is, yeah, this, we have probably over forty million dollars worth of capital needs in the next five to ten years, depending on how we're able to navigate that. This is not going to be enough. And I've made that clear to the county manager. At some point, there's gonna have to be additional conversations, or action by the board. You know, as far as the efficient use of our facilities.
I'll lobby for a bond.
I would just like to mention also, keeping, keeping in mind our community, our community. And I hope that, you know, our community, like our community members here in the seventeen-hundred, you receive sign-ons, you know, there are things that you can, when I say do, I'm just saying like, attend those sessions. Let them know what you're thinking. Let them know that, hey, you know, we're looking at the school system, we're seeing what's happening, we know what strain the board members, you know, and we're, you know, and I guess, y'all are here this evening, but guess what? The county commissioners are meeting the same time y'all are here, so you can't be in two places at once. And that's the problem right there. Why the same two places at once? They always meet the same time. We meet the first Monday of each month. We start at six, they start at seven. Can you be in two places? I can't. I would like to just be at theirs, just to hear and support, or ask questions. I can't do it tonight, 'cause they're meeting and I'm here. So keep that in mind. Maybe we need to look at that. And I think the other thing I wanted to mention, you know, the timeframe on here, with regards to this thing happening. Let's say if we did, I'm not gonna say we're not signing, but let's say so. They say right here on this agreement, they can have up to two years before they start the demolition, two years, and then five years before they even start a structure. They have, look at all that time in between there. And here we up against the back right now, trying to get this done. Then, then they here are saying that they have, within two years of the date of this recording, they shall begin construction, within two years of this construction. Just looking at the agreement.
Well, it will be this board, some of the people that will still be on it, and it will be future boards that will have to hold the feet to the fire on these agreements.
Yeah, and it says here, begin demolition within two years, and then shall begin construction of athletic facility on the property within five years. Yeah, you're right. I'm not sure I'll be here. I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, folks, this is what we doing.
But folks, we can come out of the woodwork and go to their meeting then, can't we?
Then we can go to their meetings, that's right, that's right.
Are we at a point now where we need a motion?
Can I make a motion, not do it?
Make whatever motion you want to. You've earned that right.
Motion to approve the sale of the G.C. Holly Annex for the Granville County Board of Commissioners. That's the note.
Second. And second, by Dr. Frederick. We'll go around the table on this one.
No.
Mr. Peace? No?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
What was it, count?
Five to two.
Five to two.
Motion passes. I hope that we'll be able to work well with the commissioners in making sure that the promise is made will be kept, and that the G.C. Holly name will be honored. And as Dr. Winborn said, that we have, always have a G.C. Holly Middle School. It's a tough decision, it's not an easy decision. We were hoping that we would get funds from the state to build a new middle school, but in talking with the state, it didn't seem like it was in the cards, and probably not in the near future, especially based on our ADM and our school numbers. So we appreciate the petitions and the interest, we'll review those. We'll keep you posted as to all the plans and what happens. And again, the, the agreement is on board docs, if you want to read it in its entirety.
Have we done?
No. All right, we're gonna move now to consent items. We have meeting minutes, four-oh-one, four-oh-two, four-oh-three, four-oh-four, four-oh-five, And we also have surplus vehicle requests, contract approval, transformer replacement at J.F. Webb, child nutrition beds, down to four-ten, and a field trip approval. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any, any of these that have been presented?
Do you want us to make a motion that includes all of the consent items?
We can. I think most of them have gone to commanding.
I mean, I move to approve consent items, four-point-oh-one through four-point-one-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The most have been approved.
Was that through four?
Did you say?
All of, box four, yeah.
Through four-point-nine.
Yeah. Through four-point-one-one.
Four, four-eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is academic success. I think that's, Mr. Perry?
So good afternoon again, board members, or good evening, excuse me. This evening's academic updates, we're gonna provide some information on our class of 2024. Just this evening, you had a precursor to our graduation activities. We've already graduated a class at Granville Early College High School. But we want to talk a little bit more about what this class is kind of composed of, and what they've been doing with college acceptances and with scholarships for the year. We'll also talk about learning walks this year, what we've done this year with our learning walks, what we call classroom walkthroughs. And then we'll also give you information on attendance and behavior. I'm gonna give way to Dr. Norfleet. She and Ms. Salisbury have worked very hard with compiling this data. Ms. Salisbury normally does this, but in her role as interim principal, Dr. Norfleet has been working with Mrs. Salisbury on this completion. Dr. Norfleet?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Winborn, executive team. We have our preliminary numbers for our class of 2024. We are so excited this year. I'm not gonna read every number for you, but on the screen, we currently have the number of expected graduates that we will have for the class of 2024, with a total of four-hundred-and-thirty-six students. And when we are tracking their progress beyond graduation, when we look at our three Es, enrollment, enlisting, and employment, you see that we have two-hundred-and-ninety-three students that have plans to attend either a two- or four-year college or university. And we currently have thirteen-eighty, thirty-eight students that have gainfully employment waiting after graduation. Next slide, please. So when we look at our matriculation for our students attending either a two- or four-year college, these are areas, not only have our students been accepted to, but have committed to. We are so excited, you can't see it at the, the very bottom, but we are so excited about, we have a Duke acceptance and plans to attend in the fall. Actually, two have been accepted, but we have one that has planned to attend in the fall from J.F. Webb. So we are excited about that accomplishment. But these are some of the other universities, colleges and universities that our students will be attending in the fall. Next slide, please. So when we look at our special notes of interest, at the early college, we had fifty-one students that not only earned a high school diploma, but also earned an associate's degree. Wanted to make sure we highlighted that. We had two students, one at Granville Central High School, and one at J.F. Webb, that received the SECU, that's the State Employees Credit Union Scholarship. That's a the SECU, that's the State Employees Credit Union Scholarship, that's a $10,000 scholarship. Again, we had Duke students, I mean, students at J F Webb that were accepted into Duke University, we had two students that exceeded individually $1 million in scholarships, that's huge. We have four students that-
Dr. Norfleet, may I pause you, could you repeat that again? I want to make sure everybody hears that, that's kind of remarkable.
We have two students at J F Webb that have individually received over a million dollars each in scholarships. I think you're right, Dr. Winborn, that's, that we should pause there, I mean, a million dollars.
The young gentleman, Oliver, that was here tonight, got over a million dollars in scholarship offers.
Yes, that's coming, at South, yes, South Granville High School.
I was like, wait a minute.
I was just pausing right there. There's more to come, there's more to come.
Yes, there's more to come.
Just two.
Yes.
These are at Webb, sorry.
These are at Webb High School. Also, at Webb High School, we have four students that were Connect Scholars at the North Carolina School of Science and Math, and we wanted to highlight this, because we're only a year in this program, and we have seen significant growth. We had an opportunity to meet with the representatives from the North Carolina School of Science and Math, and our original goal, I think, was to have twenty students, and we ended up with twenty-nine students, so we are growing in that area as well. And when we look at South Granville, yes, we too had a student there that exceeded scholarship, 1.2 million in scholarships, one student with over $300,000 in scholarships, and there, again, we had a North Carolina School of Science and Math Connect Scholar. Those are just some of the highlights. I think it's also important, with South Granville High School, we had three students that earned Eagle Spouse, and we know that that is a huge accomplishment as well. Next slide, please. So again, these are our preliminary numbers, there's always a revisit at the August board member to give you kind of our final numbers, so we'll do that during that time for the class of 2024. Right now, we're looking at 14,210,412 in regards to the class of 2024 and the scholarships that they received at this point, and we are actually up about $4 million, I think, from last year at this time.
Dr. Norfleet, will that be published in the paper when it's all done?
Yes.
I think this says a lot about the hard work of our counselors, working with our students too, that's great.
It's a team effort, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? All right.
So congratulations to the class of 2024, well done. So our next slide deck, thank you to Mr. Connor, talk a little bit about the learning walks. Back in, I think it was September, October, we had a conversation with you all about, what are we doing, we go in and visit classrooms, so just want to kind of revisit this conversation just a little bit. So what is a learning walk? What happens when the principal, assistant principal, or district staff goes in, what are we looking for, and what do we do with that information? So one of the main things that we're looking for is, we're looking to make sure that there is a clear learning goal and an objective, and that it is aligned to the standard course of study, that is key, making sure what is expected is being taught in that classroom. We want to make sure that students are engaged, that it's student-focused, and not, you know, teachers just reading off some slide deck, not just standing there or lecturing, but students are actually engaged in the learning process. It is very key when students are speaking academically about the content that they're, which they're studying, they're building their content knowledge and their vocabulary, and learning more about the subject in which that is being taught. What are students saying? What are those, when we go in, we ask the students, what did you guys learn today? I don't know, no, we want to hear, what did you learn? What are you learning? Tell me about what you're learning and what your teacher's teaching you today, and oftentimes, the students will be able to tell us, we're learning about fractions, or we're multiplying decimals, or we're doing such and such a reading, you know, reading for information. So students are very important, that's an important factor, we go in and we start asking questions of students, providing feedback, checks for understanding, making sure that the rigor is there in the classroom. And differentiation, how is that instruction being provided? Is it a one-size-fits-all, or is it opportunities for students to learn at the rate in which they will best understand and learn? Also, the classroom culture, is it an environment where students are comfortable making mistakes? We went into a classroom just a few weeks ago, it was a social studies class, and you can tell in that classroom, those kids had an environment, they were used to a culture of, it's okay to make a mistake in here, you know, you can ask a question, and if you're wrong, you won't be ridiculed, you won't be made fun of, and our teacher or the peers in that classroom will assist us in that learning. So you want to make sure that it's a supportive classroom environment. So next slide. So what do we do with all this information that we collect? So we use the data to drive decisions. Our school leaders have been using this information to provide professional development on their professional development days, but we've had our principal meetings with the principals, we've used the data there to drive conversation as well. Mr. Spradlin has our data, one of our data gurus, along with Miss Rice, they start pulling that information, and start comparing it to other data points in the district, so, you know, is there some correlation between the number of walkthroughs and certain behaviors, or attendance, and things of that nature? So, you know, is there a decrease in behavior, in fractions, when folks are inside of a classroom? So making sure that we use that information to drive our decision-making and making improvements. So our next slide, just kind of gives you a big snapshot of the year, this was collected last week, and we ended the year basically with 4,338 walkthroughs. So I want to say it's not quantity, but it's quality. So we want to make sure that we're using this information, looking at block two, that ninety percent of the classrooms that, you know, we go in, that information, that what's being taught is aligned to the standard course of study. And we also leave feedback, to teachers positive, and some areas that may need some improvement. So we know that, you know, we look at this information, and again, we use that to drive decisions. One of the things that we do notice is, you know, what kind of questions are being asked in those classrooms? Are there higher-order thinking level questions, or just basic recall and remembrance kinds of questions? Because we know that, you know, students need to be challenged in their thinking, and not just basic recall questions. So the death of knowledge, and we know that one of the areas that we have picked up is differentiation, making sure that teachers know how to differentiate that instruction.
I got a question there, give me an example of how they're doing that in the classroom.
Differentiation?
Yeah.
So that can be done by the actual product, what is the student asked to be turned in? The process, maybe they're given a different opportunity to do the same, they're learning the same content, but they may have a different way of doing it, maybe someone may be creating something, somebody else may be using, doing maybe a worksheet, or an activity, a group activity, a small group activity, and it's also going to be the environment as well.
Okay.
So our next slide, just kind of gives you a little bit of cumulative data on the walkthroughs over the course of the year, so there is an increase in the number of walkthroughs that have been completed. Walkthroughs are done by principals, APs, district staff, our instructional coaches do not do walkthroughs, because they're going in there supporting teachers to build their craft, so, you know, and this is not evaluative as well, this is to help increase what we're expecting, to make sure that it's getting done in the classroom, so we don't use this to evaluate our teachers, but just to give it as a method of feedback.
So what attributes to the increase in the total number of walkthroughs? Is it just people doing it more frequently than they have in the past, or?
Being more intentional about it.
Okay.
More intentional, and we noticed a pattern of more folks going into those classrooms, our, my department, the academic team, we go in, we've actually set up two teams, Team A and Team B, so we go in as well during the week, as well as the principals have put themselves on schedules to go in, and the APs, they've been working very hard to get in those classrooms every day, so, and then they're doing a better job of recording as well, so they can use an iPad, use a laptop, but most folks kind of go in with their cellphones to capture the data.
Well, most of the teachers pretty receptive to the feedback, not intimidating.
Very quickly, we'll get an email saying, okay, what you guys saw was an intervention period, it was not our, it was not our standard lesson of the day, or they'll tell us what, you know, what we may have thought was something that was going on, but they'll clarify it for us in the comments. So and then, I know we've had some individual conversations with some teachers who kind of felt like that, y'all are not picking on me, are you? No, we're not picking on you, that is, they're not trying to pick on anyone, but y'all just want to help improve the craft and provide you with that feedback. And so it's not just the principal, but there's multiple people who are providing that feedback to staff. Dr. Winborn here for?
Yeah, before you go on, Mr. Perry, if I may, thank you, Mr. Connor, so just a couple of comments, not only has the number of overall walkthroughs increased, I believe the quality of the walkthrough itself has gotten better, Mr. Perry has made a number of adjustments on, with the tool itself compared to the previous year, and in addition, he is being extremely intentional about the distribution of these walkthroughs, so that, you know, we're not going in the same classroom every single time. So, answer your question, Ms. LeBreg, big reason is his leadership, and so I just want to give you a shout out for that, Mr. Perry, I think you're definitely taking this to the next level, and I'm very proud.
Have we gotten to the point that teachers are doing walkthroughs? That was something said about that at one time.
Not yet.
Not yet.
You know what I would find really beneficial? I mean, I'm not speaking for anybody else, if I could go on one.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
As an observer, observing.
Yeah, I mean, so that I could understand how long they spend in there, what are you looking at, like, those types of things, because I, I mean, we've heard about these a lot now, and, you know.
Absolutely.
In order to better understand what you guys are doing, I'd-
I'll add, you're more than welcome to join us on a walkthrough, we have a schedule that's developed at the central office level, but I'm sure our principals will be willing to, you know, walk through as well. Additionally, we actually had DPI to come in a couple of months ago, and they went on some walks with us, so they saw the process, and they learned how we were doing it here in Granville, so they were kind of taking information back and sharing it with some other districts as well.
Maybe that's something we could do, start a next year.
In fall, yeah.
And I like to add, too, when I was working with the Teachers of the Year, you know, when we went and sat in the classroom and all of that, that was really great, to sit there and look at their communication with the students, and the students communicating back, it's great.
I will add, we try to make it, you know, go in, you know, three or four minutes and get on out, and sometimes you stay in there just a little bit longer, because you want to capture the depth of what you're seeing, so that happens. But the next slide, I'll just move along, talks, just looks a little bit more about the learning walks by school, and I want to preference this by saying, this is a cumulative total, because you have numerous people going into these, this is by school, numerous people going in and making those, having those walkthroughs. So what you'll see here is central office walkthroughs, in addition to the principal walkthroughs and AP walkthroughs as well. So our smaller schools, you know, you may not have as many, because, for example, at early college, there's one administrator on that site, and then our staff will go in as well. So this does not reflect, you know, an individual principal or AP actually doing all those walks, but I will attribute a large number of it to that school. Any questions?
Sorry, could you go back to that graph for just a second? I'm just, in my head, I guess I'm trying to figure out why.
The variation.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so obviously Granville Academy, I'm super impressed, right, because they don't even have class every day, so, I mean, so that's really impressive, but then you look right above that, and you see our biggest school in the entire district is at the bottom. And so I, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why there's such a big difference. And I know Energy has an insane amount of students now, they picked up a lot, and so that's, that's really impressive, that they had the top.
Yeah, these are, yep, you're, these are very good observations, and we have made the same.
Okay.
We have conversations. Because we, yeah, we've refrained from having quotas, or, you know, but we have, we have targets, and we have goals, and I send encouraging messages to our schools, to, you know, we see how the pace will pick up, and then it'll wane, things happen.
Particularly like this time of year, you'll see the number of walkthroughs go down, because a lot of things are due. December, you'll see the number drop, you see the number very high, the numbers are high at the start of the year, so as the school year progresses, you see the ebbs and flows of the walkthroughs.
I'm just like, for the high schools, you know, they have three administrators, and so, each, so I was expecting a little bit bigger numbers.
And I don't believe every school is up there either, Mr. Perry, may have gotten squeezed when the chart was pasted. No, maybe I might be wrong. But in any case, I mean, there is so much for us to gain from this information, you know, so many rich conversations, from this sort of top-level view, all the way down into the individual averages that, if you, you know, that original graph where you showed the numerical values that are given to each item that you look for, and you can see trends as those go up and down throughout the year.
And so the average across the district is about 287 walkthroughs, so. Any other questions about our learning walk?
Kind of, sort of, I know it's probably too late this year to consider this, but while it's at toll, I remember seeing the high school graphs come in, walk the hallways of elementary school here, it's such a good motivation, too, maybe try to work there some next year, some of our kids, to get the motivation to become graduates.
We did that again this year.
Did you?
We did.
What school?
Webb went to Cradle.
Okay.
And South Granville went to Mount Energy, thank you.
Actually, that's this week, Thursday.
I didn't hear about that.
Webb went to Stovall and West Oxford as well.
I'm sorry, thank you, want to give them due credit.
All right, I'm sorry, I missed that, thumbs up again.
I know it was on our social media accounts, so if you follow us on social media, you'll see a photo or a video of the students in one of the elementary schools, so shout out to our communications department.
Good.
All right, so at this point, we're going to move forward with attendance and behavior, and I'll call Dr. Norfleet back up.
All righty, next slide, please. I want to reiterate, Dr. Winborn spoke earlier during his announcements about our continued improvement in the area of attendance and behavior, and so when we look at month nine, we continue to grow, our district goal is 96.5, and for the month, our ninth month, we're at 96%, so we are continuing to climb. Now, I will tell you that there's an asterisk here, because it's, you know, towards the end of the year, this is our data as it reflects nine of the 18 days left within this period, but we are very optimistic, and again, we continue to see a steady increase in overall attendance for students. Next slide. Here is just, again, we wanted to give you that snapshot, snapshot to look at the whole year, you see where we have continued to grow. As Mr. Perry mentioned earlier about the ebbs and flows, you see in December, we did have that dip there, in regards to, some people take a little extra time for winter break, but we get back into the swing of things back in January, and we continue to climb back up. We did have a slight dip in March, and we talked about that previously, when we saw a rise in strep throat, and the stomach bug, that kind of thing, but again, our principals have done a wonderful job, along with our support staff and teachers, and encouraging students, and reminding them of the importance of attendance, and the link to instructional outcomes, so, next slide, please. Here is just a breakdown where we have looked at excused and unexcused absences, and your arrows are in reflection to comparison of last month's numbers. So we dipped a little bit in receiving those excused absences, remember, parents have two to three days to turn in a note, a doctor's note, or a written note from a parent explaining the absence. Middle school, we did a lot better in getting those notes in, and high school, again, we had a little dip, but overall, again, our true reflection is that we are still up when it comes to our overall district attendance.
Dr. Norfleet, this slide always gets me, and I have to remind myself, so basically what, like, if you look at elementary, a third of the absences are excused, and two-thirds are unexcused.
Correct.
Those percentages are percentage of the total-
Correct.
Number of, it's not the rate.
Right, you're correct, the total rate of percentage of students, so if you add the 32 plus the 67, you're going to get 100% of elementary students.
Yeah, the majority are unexcused.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Next slide. Oh, yes, 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 go back, please. So we, in addition to the wonderful work that's happening at the school level in monitoring student attendance, we do have our district attendance specialists, along with our social workers, that have been knocking on doors, calling parents, assisting schools, and making assisting schools in making sure that students are attending. Behavior, not behavior, I'm sorry, attendance contracts. And when there's not follow-through or improvement, those cases elevate to our district attendance committee. To date, we have met with about 49 families in regards to looking to see if there's additional support or rationale for attendance, if there's anything that we at the district level need to do to support schools as well as family in improving that attendance. Of that 49, we have referred on 44 families to our local district attorney's office for truancy. And so, and then we have three families that we're still continuing to monitor and provide additional support. So that partnership in regards from student to staff to school to the district level has been phenomenal. It is also giving our district attendance committee kind of even more insight as to some of the challenges that our families are facing and giving us insight in, you know, if there is a time where we need to look at possibly changing some of our procedures in which we are tracking attendance or just even time management when it comes to, you know, bus. You know, we've been able to educate a lot of parents. Dr. Hamm has done a great job with our what's, where's the bus app. And so although there's been a multitude of information that's gone out to parents, we still hear parents that say, oh, I didn't know about that. So we, it's a chance for us to also educate parents on the options that they have in regards to assisting them with things like what time does the bus come and making sure that they're there on time. So we're happy with the work of the district attendance committee, and this is something that we hope to continue within the next school year. Any questions about attendance? Okay, when we look at behavior, again, we like to give you a comparison, a snapshot from the previous year this time. When we look at our overall referrals, we are down. Again, kind of echoing Dr. Winborn's comments on how we're doing when it comes to behaviors and write-ups. Our total for the month of May, thus far, well, for the month of May was 840 write-ups, office referrals, and 502 suspensions. If you look, though, many of those suspensions were in-school suspensions. So it wasn't removing the student totally from the learning environment, but it may have been one of those where the student needed a break to get themselves back on track. But we're, overall, we are ecstatic about the improvement that we're seeing in regards to our behavior referrals and how we are addressing them at the school level. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to put Ms. Salisbury on the spot. Anything you'd like to add about scholarships while we're, or Class of 2024?
I would just like to say I'd be elated to see the total because I passed that north Carolina one week ago, Mr. Perry, about a month ago. And last year, we were at 11.9 in August, and we're already at 14.1. So I can't wait to see what we're at in August.
Thank you. So our next item is science curriculum. Someone asked Mrs. Amy Rice and Mrs. Lori Poirier to come forward to talk a little bit about our science adoption process. This was shared with the academic committee back last, in April. So we're going to present to you today our recommendation for adoption.
Greetings, Chair, all board members. Thank you. We want to share with you a little bit of history about our science curriculum adoption, the state newly adopted standards, and then a recommendation of what we would like to proceed with for curriculum. So two years ago, the state decided to adopt new science standards, which it was time because North Carolina's last revision was in 2009. And so it takes about two years before you get to the process of you're finally going to implement them. So the first year is working on those standards. The standards were adopted earlier this school year in September. And since then, the state has been working on resources to provide all districts with that can help us roll out these standards next year. We just got the resources two weeks ago, so they worked really hard on it all year long, and we now have them. So I linked in there for you to see the standards and all of our standards. The goal is that we want our students to become true scientists and that we are embedding more of what are the science and engineering practices, hands-on, becoming scientists, doing more, problem-solving. And so all of that is there. Just so you know, our, there are national science standards called Next Generation Science Standards. You'll hear them called Next Gen. North Carolina standards do not align with those perfectly. They align a lot, but we like to be a little bit different, and so they don't align perfectly. So when looking at most textbook companies or software companies, curriculum companies, I shouldn't call them textbook companies anymore, but curriculum companies, most are going to be aligned with Next Gen standards because most states are directly aligned with those. So that proposed a little difficulty with us, but we plunged ahead. Next slide. So Lori here, and she is the expert on all that has been done. She's our K-12 science coach, and so she met with all of the company representatives. I met briefly with them and then kicked them over to Lori. And then she reached out to several teachers throughout the district, those she's worked with, those who are willing to take the time to really dig down into these resources and ask them to provide feedback. And then she, for those that weren't providing feedback, she would just go and talk to them and show them some of it and say, what are your first thoughts? To get as many opinions as possible. Teachers that reviewed the options in depth provided pros and cons to us, and then she did the same. She reviewed them all in depth. Two to three teachers across each grade span provided overall feedback. And we reviewed three, Discovery Education, HMH, and SAVIS. Those were the three that we reviewed. Next. We have a chart here with some X's and checks for what each provides. And so at the top, the first column is HMH. I will let you know that HMH is what we use for our K-8 math and reading. Discovery Ed is in the middle, and then SAVIS is to the far side. So you can see pros and cons of, not pros and cons, but what they have, each of them. And you can see that Discovery Ed has the most green checks. SAVIS doesn't have anything for elementary. So we would only be able to use that for middle and high if we did, and then we'd have to have something different for the elementary. I'll go ahead and tell you, based on this, most teachers, in fact, all of the teachers, by the time they finally realized their feedback, liked the Discovery Ed. One, the number one thing is it is state-aligned. Discovery Education has actually taken the North Carolina standards and built this curriculum to align to our North Carolina standards. And again, a lot of it is aligned with Next Gen, but they have made it perfectly aligned. So that was the greatest benefit. The con is that we don't have printed consumable textbooks. But the goal that is, is that our students would actually be doing more hands-on activities anyway when it comes to science. And so all of their student resources can be printed. So it's just a matter of a teacher would print them, and whatever they want could be a copy for the student to take notes, that they would have their science notebooks, and all of those things are guided through the lessons for the teachers as well.
What are the five Es?
The five Es? And I will say, all of them are usually, except for SAVIS, are, it's, I think I even have them up here. Go back, link.
Is it? Did I miss it?
It's in two more slides. It's in two more slides. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Because I knew someone would ask.
Yeah, I see it. Just kidding, you don't have to answer.
And I did not want to draw a blank on the spot.
No, you need to tell me, recite them.
But our lesson plan models for science are already aligned and asking students to have, engage them, get a hook, you know? Then explore. So they go through the five Es of the science.
So for hands-on activities, how many dissections are we going to be doing? Come on, Mr. Perry.
Again, we, our goal is to.
Are we talking rabbits or cats? Come on.
Depends on what we would purchase from Carolina Biological that's least expensive at the time, or that they have a large stock of. But the goal is that teachers would be, schools would be able to have their own instructional supplement and to determine what they want to order there. So when I was in high school, we chose fetal pigs when I was teaching that. So we left it up to schools. Next slide. This is more of what's offered for, all of them do have very, some labs are very expensive. Our high schools at the chemistry level, I will go ahead and tell you, some of our lab or Tories are not set up to be able to do all of the labs that may be recommended, just because of safety features and fume hoods and things that are needed there that are working. But the virtual labs where Discovery Ed, I even went through and did some of those labs, and they're, they're not animated. It is truly a lab. And so it's just, it's virtual.
So what, what, how, like, what different school science courses are there?
So our main high school in science, they have the earth and environmental science, and they have biology. All of the textbook companies, what they use to get for, most of our students take physical science as their required state-level physical science. These companies usually have a physics textbook and then a chemistry textbook. So what is used for the physical science is blending from the physics and the physical, the chemistry to make the physical science curriculum. But those are the four main. And then if high schools are offering AP sciences, those, most of those can shift and share their resources. The funding, the price of each is at the bottom. Any questions? She knows it all.
Well, Ms. Rice, you're being a little modest yourself. Did you share with everyone how you started your career in education?
I was a high school science teacher. So I did dig down into, I'll be honest with you. I thought because of user-friendliness and what we would know and staff, I thought, I went in thinking HMH was going to be the way we were going to go because it's what we have for everything else. And so, but as we ventured into actually looking into it and digging down, the Discovery Ed and its aligned curriculum, but also just the number of lessons all the way down to third grade, truly plenty of lessons for our third graders. And, you know, in the past, for the last few years, all we've had for our resources are for fifth grade because we tested that grade, and eighth grade because we tested that grade, and biology. So to be able to have some solid resources for K-12 is just, we can't just wait until fifth grade and then leave them alone until eighth grade, so.
I'm really glad you looked at multiple companies.
We did. We did. And, you know, they won me over. They won her over. We went in, you know, not thinking it, so. So our recommendation is that, as a district, we adopt for curriculum as our main curriculum resource, the Discovery Education. Again, those are the reasons why alignment to the North Carolina standards is number one. But also, it already has lesson plans and pacing guides embedded for us already. So our curriculum design teams can really focus on other things and data that we need to pull, aligned benchmark assessments. All of the options can be printed. Anything that's in there can be printed. Text can be lowered by two grade levels. So if there is something on the screen and you've got a new English learner or just a student who has a learning disability in reading but loves science, the text level can be lowered by two grade levels. And again, it can be converted into multiple languages for students who may need that.
So if our science curriculum needs to be printed, do we need to increase our copy budget in all of our schools? Like superficially?
There you go. And I think what won me over the most is that, is when you told me that it's non-Google answers, that we just have too many, too many resources out there, that Quizlets are already online, answers can be found online, that the labs and the hands-on things, that these, this is where students are going to have to do the thinking themselves.
Ms. Rice, I'm going to interrupt. When you first glance at the price tag for this, it's a lot of money. Mr. Perry and I have talked about this in depth, and I don't know, would you mind maybe speaking to that just a little bit?
Absolutely. So when you look at, for example, K-8 math, and we use a particular vendor, we have a five-year contract, and that's $794,000. Seven hundred and nine, $794,000. When we look at reading, which is grades K through eight, that's $1 million. So this is K-12, and this is covered in five years. So I think it's, we're getting a real true-cost savings going with Discovery Education as well.
So it's roughly like $10,000 per grade level per year across the entire district?
Absolutely. So in the attachment, the contract attachment, it lists all of the actual software licenses and all those different things that are actually included in the package. So it's very, it's very, very hefty, put it that way. Lots of resources and information for our teachers.
Is this on the computer that you pull it off of? Is that where you pull the materials off of? Do they update the materials constantly? Like if something changes in the field of science? So I don't know enough to ask the question.
When we first started looking at the curriculum that was in Discovery Education, we were like, mm, they don't have all that much. And it was because they were actually still building it. And then we, she went back in, and she was like, oh, no, they've added more. It's constantly having lessons and updates that are still added. So that is the benefit of a tech book versus a hard copy book where Pluto was a planet, and now it's no longer a planet, but my book's so old, it's still a planet. So this is, it's not.
Science was not my thing in school.
Motion to approve Discovery Ed K-12 science curriculum as presented.
Motion's been made. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Ms. Poirier and Ms. Rice, for all your hard work on this.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, academic team, for all your work this week.
Star attraction here. Fiscal responsibility.
Thank you very much.
Take it away, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. You have before you tonight our budget amendments for the month. You will see in your, in the state budget amendment that we increased, we had additional state funds of $624,975. That comes from that economically disadvantaged student support, excuse me, that support funds for Cradle and Butterstone Elementary that we approved before. We were just budgeting the funds at that point. Additional funds for summer reading camp for this summer. Literacy intervention funds and school technology funds, as well as posting the safety grant budget that we received earlier this year. That increases our state budget to $55,747 and, uh, 700, excuse me, $747,736. In the local budget, there was no change to the budget, it's simply departmental moves and reorganization. The federal grants, you'll see an increase to the budget of $287,164. That is increasing funding for EC and the multiple EC programs. Twenty-first century community learning centers, the title programs, Title I, II, et cetera, as well as some later ESER III funds that had to be posted. And then the final reversion of our unused ESER, ESER II. And then the final reversion of our unused ESER, ESER II dollars. And then in our child nutrition fund, we were able to increase our federal funding a little bit with, with the change in the C, to the CEP program, our funding increased in the, on the federal side just a little bit. So we were able to budget those funds. And in our other restricted, our Fund Eight, we have an increase of $715 from our recycling program and, and other allocations, just movement of funds to manage some year-end maintenance projects that we needed to fund. Any questions about those budget amendments? They are here for your approval.
Motion to approve budget amendments as presented.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we are going to start with our budget review. It's important to note that this is for the month ending April 30th. At that point of the year, we're 10 out of 12 months, that's 83% of the year. You can see in our local budget that we're, we, we want it to be a little bit lower at this point because we've got that local supplement that we pay out in Ju, in June. So we're in good shape there. Our state budget is right on target with expected levels of, of expenses. And you can see the, the remaining funds as well. Any questions about where we stand on our budget? Again, we're, we're in that closeout process right now. So we're, we'll, we'll be taking a look at this at our, at our next work session as well. The next item, we're going to take a look at the COVID funds. That summary page that, that we see there, you can see that in our main remaining ESER of that PRC 181, that's our big fund. We have $1.8 million remaining. We are using, some of that fund is going to take care of that science curriculum that you just approved. And of course, that many of those funds at the top of that line will cover our, our summer program costs as well.
Ms. Hines?
Could you go back?
Sure, can you go back?
Um, some of those categories such as missing students, homeless, that type of thing, are we anticipating having money left in those? Are they very specific on how they have to be used?
They are super specific on how they're supposed to be used. They are working through the, those 183 and 184, the two homeless funds, but again, very specific on, on the purposes they can be used for. The other one, we can see like 189, that math enrichment, we have purchased what we needed to purchase and we have that 2,200 remaining. That's more than likely going to be unused at this point, unless we can, we can work something out. That 191, the grants for identification and location of missing students, $55,000 that again, has to be very specifically used and we have not been able to find, it's a contract basically, and we have not been able to find anyone to fulfill that contract. So that will be reverted money.
Is that a position, Ms. Hines, or something?
A contract.
Okay.
Yes. No, we would love to be able to use it to, to care, take care of one of our positions. But the other, the other are just working through, you know, finishing out the year basically. So we should be, we're expecting to, to use the, the majority of that funding. Any other questions about the remaining COVID funds? Now, and, and a lot of these programs too, indirect costs are part of, part of the expenses. So at the year end, that's when we take our, our indirect costs and, and those funds go into our Fund Eight and can be used for, for other ways to support the district priorities. So those will be coming out of those programs as well. The next item we have is board travel. We did have to add a little bit more to that budget. So right now you are, you have pretty much, you have taken care of your budget.
Drive about a mile.
Don't we get to put a dollar and 19 cents into our fund balance?
Well, absolutely, absolutely. That will go into fund balance. You're absolutely correct. But, but I'm, I'm assuming that you guys will have a discussion moving forward about that first item on there, the, can you slide over to the, to the left a little bit, Mr. Connor? The videos, thank you, the School Board Association video subscription was $1,500. So we can, I'm sure there will be discussions moving forward about how viable, if, if we need to move forward with that.
Do you know when that contract comes up? Is it in the fall?
I believe it's year-round. I mean, it's, it's based on the fiscal year. I'll, I'll have to take a look at that. I believe it is on the fiscal year. Any questions about that? The next item on the agenda is, is just a budget update, just so to keep you all abreast of, of where we are with our, with the budget development for 2425. We actually received our state planning allotments. We were very excited to, to receive them. At the finance committee, we shared the details of those state planning allotments and how they compare to the current fiscal year. So I didn't put them up here, but feel free to go back into the minutes and you can take a look at the, that detail. But just the highlights, we, we knew we were losing positions because of our ADM. We're losing eight and a half positions, that, so those are teacher positions, school health positions. The schools have already been preparing for that. It is a little bit steeper than we had anticipated, but that's already been in the plan, in the staffing plan for next year. And if you remember, we have positions, we have months of employment as well, and we have lost 11 months of employment, so basically one position. Most of that comes through CTE. That was nine months of that and two months of an assistant principal. And then of course, in dollar allotments, we've lost 306,000. As I reported before, about 266,000 of that is our low wealth money. So the majority of that is part of that low wealth calculation. But again, there's more detailed information in the finance committee meeting minutes, if you'd like to take a look at that. Next slide, please. So I found, I found an interesting topic has come up with, with our fund balance. And just to kind of review, that top left-hand chart, which you've seen before, you know, we, we started this, this school year, this fiscal year with beginning fund balance of 7.8 million, which is about nine and a half percent of, of what we consider the operating funds. You can see that chart on the right kind of breaks down what we expect to keep in our fund balance. It's, it's operating funds, which is a, a total of our state funding, local funding, and our non-COVID or ESER federal funding. That's what we consider our operating funds. And if, you know, we've talked about before that we like to keep eight percent. It's best practice to keep eight percent in, in our fund balance. And that calculates to be $6.6 million. We ran across an interesting article published by Ed NC that referenced an LGC report. And LGC is our local government commission. They basically kind of oversee all of the, the fiscal areas across the state and, and review our audits and, and all of that. And in that report, it was interesting, you know, as I'm, I was, I'm reading through this, they speak with Philip Price, who is the former CFO of, of DPI. And, and he repeats the eight percent need for fund balance. That's best practice. But they state in the article that that's not, there's nothing in statute that says eight percent is required, that it's really depends on the relationship, the needs of the county and the relationship between the boards and, and all of that. What concerned me more is when they referenced the LGC report and it listed the county's fund balance and the percentage of, of, of operating funds. And it listed us as a 40%, I think it was, 41% fund balance. And that got me to thinking because we, we have always said that, you know, we knew that it's 9.5%. So as I investigated, it, this report, the LGC, when they're looking at fund balance, they report it based on local funds only. They don't look at state and federal operating funds. They only look at local funds. Now, all of, all of everything we have heard, the Hill Group, when they came in to consult, when Philip Price mentioned in the article, they talk about operating funds. Because the critical piece of information is we don't know what our state budget is yet, not really. We won't find out until the fall. And we've had years that our funds decreased significantly in the fall. We don't find out about our federal, in fact, we still don't know what our federal funding is going to look like next year because it's, it's a different fiscal year. The feds, their fiscal year begins in October. And we've already been told, in fact, we were, we were told the end of last week and confirmed today that our federal programs won't have their funding allotments until July. And I, I see the stress on Ms. Curran's face over here. We have to staff our school because if we wait until the fall, it's too late. It's too late. We strongly recommend that we continue to compare our fund balance to our operating funds because we need that stability and it allows us time to, to adjust, to make changes if there's a significant late, out, late in the day change in our funding structure. I just thought it was really important, so we're not recommending that we change anything about how we calculate fund balance. I just wanted it, we wanted it to, to be transparent, especially when the LGC and articles statewide are reporting that we have a 40% fund balance that's significantly different from our nine and a half percent fund balance that we calculate. So I really wanted you guys to be aware of this. And just my recommendation is that we continue as we are. Maybe we have a little bit more flexibility in the amount of fund balance, but I, I don't recommend going a little too crazy because if we look at eight percent of our local allocation, that's a fund balance of one and a half million dollars. And that makes me a little nervous. That makes me very nervous, so. So that's kind of where we are. So I really just, this is informational, just wanted to let you know and so we could move on from there.
If you have to use your fund balance, say, for something that hasn't come in the beginning of the year and you're going into your fund balance, when it does come in, are you able to replace it? Move it back around?
We are. The, the key is, we, we receive pots of money, like our local money, we get an equal allocation every month, right? But we know that in July, we don't use a lot because there's, you know, we don't pay as much payroll, we don't do a lot of things. So we're kind of banking some money that kind of floats us through the year, if that makes sense in very colloquial terms. State money, we spend the money and we request the money. It's an automatic thing. We are, they really want us to only request the amount of funds that we use for that month. And every month, it's zeroed out. So it's really, we count on that local money to kind of float us a little bit as it's, as necessary. If that answered your question.
I know in the meeting we discussed that you were going to have to present this to Drew Cummings and his analyst and all. Has that occurred yet?
Well, there's not an official presentation necessarily. This is kind of it. Just, it's just to make it public knowledge and, you know.
I just didn't, yeah, I just didn't know if you had heard back from them at all as far as like if what we're doing is comfortable for them as well.
No, we've not had that conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is the same follow-up that we had at our last meeting, just wanting to keep you in line, inform what our next steps are. We are continuing to develop and, and put together the budgets. Now, we have the state allotments now and as soon as we find out the final amounts from the county budget, I'm going to be working double time to get a budget, you know, tentative budget ready for you guys. I am hoping to bring you that budget to our work session on, on June 24th. And then of course, we will not have our final, that is an interim budget resolution. Your, your final budget resolution would be in the fall when we receive final funding amounts. Are there any questions? The next item is, is one of our end-of-the-year cleanup type of resolutions that we ask you guys to, to approve. It's basically authorizing Dr. Winborn to approve any final budget amendments that we have. We will be working right up until June 30th and always have those last-minute budget amendments that, that we need to have approved before year end. So this, we, we are, I'm asking that you all approve this resolution so Dr. Winborn can sign those amendments.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution for year-end budget amendments.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve it as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hines. We are at the point that we are going to make, somebody make a motion to go into closed session for the purposes set forth under item 10 in the agenda. And after that, we will have a short break and come back for our closed session.
Motion to go in closed session?
Second.
Made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have now returned to open session. The next item on our agenda is to approve for approval of the certified and classified personnel that's presented in closed session. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the personnel report as amended in closed session.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion passes. The next thing on our agenda is dates to remember, which is, I will say, the 24th is going to be the end-of-the-year special meeting. We're going to be at two o'clock here. We're going to also use that time to do our superintendent evaluation work. Okay, going back up, we know we've got a, a little policy meeting tomorrow morning. I'm just kidding. June 7th is our last day of school. And we also have our graduations, as you well know. And the retirement celebration is going to be June 13th, Northern Rammels Middle School at 4:00 PM. And again, the end of the year board meeting. There are also several award ceremonies going on throughout this week, so hopefully some of us can get out to a few of them. I just got word, Dr. Winborn just got word, I'll announce this, that the county commissioners did approve our resolutions that we sent. And they also have approved the agreement on the transfer. So that's what we've heard for the money. Okay, that's all I have and we now need a.
Motion to adjourn.
Don't everybody speak at once? Okay, who made the motion?
Danielle, all second.
Danielle. I didn't know, we kind of, it's like field day, we're having a race here, you know? Danielle made the motion. Who's second?
All second.
Yes, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody be. Everybody be safe.